Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simmsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. I'd like to thank SCTV for recording the meeting. And if those who can join us in standing and reciting the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a roll call. Let's see. Holly Bem?
Here.
David Blooming? Present. Erin Levin Smith?
Here.
Craig McCormack? Here. Alan Needham?
Here.
William Rice? Present. Elizabeth Burke? Absent. Richard Cortez?
Here.
Gary Lungarini? Absent. Okay, we have six regular members of the commission tonight, Rich, so we will not be needing your services at this point should someone fall ill and need to leave the meeting, and I shall reconsider that decision.
Proud to serve one meeting.
Very good. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Now, we still have the June 11th minutes outstanding, right?
Oh, they had a lot of stuff, and we haven't had enough people there.
Yeah, we tabled it last meeting. The instructions were for town staff to go back to either the transcript or the recording and try to clarify something, so, Robin, you have any?
Mike sends his apologies. He did not do that, so he remembered shortly before this meeting that he was supposed to do that, so we'll make sure it gets on for next week.
So, are we being recorded?
We are.
Right there, okay.
Yeah.
So, then let's have the minutes reflect the fact that the minutes from June 11th, 2019, still need to be reviewed by town staff. Very good. Okay. All right, Mr. Secretary, would you mind walking us through the July 23rd minutes?
Okay, regarding the minutes of July 23rd.
Is it, so on line 42, is it gai heske or heskep? I thought it was t.
It's heskep, it's actually H-E-S. I can have her fix that.
H-E-S?
Yeah.
Heskep.
Yeah.
K-E-T-H.
K-E-T-H.
Yes, that's what I thought, okay, and so, so heskep, because I think I went to high school. Um, no, but, um, so then on line 42, that twice.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'm sorry, go ahead, Erin.
No, no, and there's some on the other page, too.
Well, let's finish page one.
Yep.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. Does anybody have an issue with page one? Okay. Page two, Erin?
53, that gasket would be heskep.
Oh, yeah. Let's get a bell checker.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else on page two?
Last stuff.
All right, page three. Okay, then, is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 23rd with the corrections that remain? So, who was on that?
Somebody did.
I did.
David Blooming?
I second.
And Holly, okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alan. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a referral from the zoning commission. CGS 8-3 referral from zoning commission, application number 19-38 of Thomas Ryan Esquire, agent, Simmsbury Town Shops LLC petitioner, for a text amendment to section 4.3.3, section D, or paragraph D.6 of the Simmsbury Center Code zoning regulations to add a driving school as a use. Public hearing scheduled for October 7th. Okay, so, I think commissioners, you have a copy of the zoning application. I went to the Town Center Code, and I'm not quite sure that the applicant referred to the exact right section, but it's correct in the agenda. Section 4.3.3, D.4, uh, D.6, sorry, D.6 currently says, and this would be permitted uses.
Right.
Trade vocational business school, and the applicant is asking to add the term "driving school." And let's keep in mind that our responsibility here is to evaluate the proposed text amendment as it pertains to the plan of conservation and development. Any discussion? Is the applicant, the applicant's not here?
Not.
Okay, anything to add?
This is actually an existing driving school that's looking to come down here. It's the one that's on West Street, and they're moving over here. When staff reviewed this trade vocational business school, we didn't really feel like it met those three criterias, which is why we recommended it for a text amendment. There was history of a driving school actually across the street, though we're not sure how that had came to be at the time, but we felt this was kind of the best course of action to put it back in there. It will be on the backside in the rear, so it's a good place for it as far as fitting in, and we feel that it goes along with the other uses that are in the commercial use categories in the Simmsbury Center Code.
Where is this specific? I'm just curious.
Um, it's going to be on one of the downstairs offices is where they'll be based on the backside of Simmsbury Town Shops.
Oh, okay.
So, like where L Designs is, and I think there's like a, I think it's called like Board and Brush, I think, a painting thing that's back there now that took up some of the Taekwondo space that was back there.
Such a good spot for it.
Yeah, yeah.
And they've secured enough parking spaces for their fleet of student cars?
Yeah, they don't have many. The way the Simmsbury Center Code works is they actually get to take credit for public parking that's in the downtown, so from a parking perspective, it's not really something that comes into play very often when we look at those applications, because we have all the big commuter lots that are there.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't have a few. No.
Tell me if you don't want that, though. Is it typical for applicants to come on by when we do a thing like this? I mean, we've had a couple times where applicants didn't show up, or something a little more heavy-hitting than that, but...
For referrals, I almost don't staff your board very, very often, but I would definitely think for something that's, you know, a more in-depth kind of request, they should certainly be here to kind of talk about their proposal. Yeah.
I agree.
I think they do classes on Tuesday nights.
There you go.
So, that's why. She does in the afternoon and then the evening, so it could be that they're tied up.
Okay, so this is, I think, I wouldn't consider this economic development. It's really just a...
Tenant.
Well, it's a business in town that's moving to a different location, so it's not improving the, you know, the grand list or anything like that. But we do have, you know, a lot of discussion in the POCD about Simmsbury Town Center and trying to develop that, and I think this fits right in.
Yep.
So, I make a motion to return a positive referral to the zoning commission for application 19.38, finding that the proposed text amendment is...
Consistent.
Consistent with the goals and objectives of the 2017 Simmsbury Plan of Conservation and Development.
I was second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
I hate to say it, though, their location across from the high school is perfect.
Yeah.
They just need to be able to walk.
You know, it is in Hurricane, they'll walk a little further.
No, they're true. I'm just saying.
Probably better for their health.
But even when they had to take the driving test, they could go right from school. It was really cool. It was a...
Yeah, makes you wonder why they'd want to move.
Can I turn it now?
Red.
Am I allowed to now?
Yeah.
My daughter walks down to the coffee shop down there after school all the time. It's an easy walk.
It is. I'm just saying, but it's quite a, I mean, it's so convenient right across the line, because it was perfect when they had to take the exam and be in the driving.
It's good that they use their legs. I find it's actually one of the plus features of our town, that the high school, they can walk to town. There's too much of America, that's not an option.
So, who seconded that?
I agree. Erin. Yeah, I just thought it was such an inconvenience. I don't know, maybe around one of those.
All right, very efficient, commissioners, very efficient. Okay, next on the agenda, general commission business. Any correspondence, Robin?
Just the added item, which I'll give up to the rest of the board.
Thank you. Do we have to make a motion to amend the agenda?
You should, yes.
So, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add discussion pertaining to Kratzert, Kratzert Jones and Associates' letter regarding 80 Climax Road public hearing comments dated September 13th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, Erin seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so, take a minute to read this brief note. Okay, so, Robin, could you please explain it to the commission again?
Yeah, so, we actually do have the milars. I was telling the chairman before the meeting for him to sign tonight, but the owners, applicant, are away, and they have to have those milars filed in the town clerk's office in a week, so they were just a little afraid that if for some reason they didn't get back in time, they wouldn't be able to file them within that seven-day period, so they're kind of doing the built-in suspenders approach and asking for the request for the extension, even though it may or may not be needed.
So, why 90 days?
90 days is just the standard that you typically ask for.
They started, they started clearing.
They shouldn't be clearing yet. I was supposed to go out tomorrow to look at the clearing limits.
Certainly looked like it to me, and certainly when I was door knocking, people told me to go take a look.
I'll be out there tomorrow, so I'll see first.
There was a bulldozer on the property. It looked like they had taken trees down.
Okay.
Trees, maybe that was it. So, can they clear trees?
They can clear trees.
Okay, so maybe that...
They can clear the whole property until we look at the limits of clearing, so maybe they were taking down some trees.
I think that's what was it. There was a bulldozer, but the trees were, so they've started clearing the trees.
So, Robin, what's, what, what are they concerned about if the milars are here?
The milars are here, they're concerned that they won't be able to get somebody into the office to file the milars in the clerk's office.
In the clerk's office.
Right.
So, you're saying after Bill signs them, they only have seven days?
Right.
To put them with the clerk.
Right, yeah.
Is there a timeline to when Bill has to sign them? Sign them today or tomorrow?
Uh, well, I mean, they have to be signed in order to be filed, so...
But that would strike the clock for them, and they don't want to strike the clock.
Oh, I see.
What I'm saying, what if you didn't sign them for another week? Then there would be no need for the extension.
No, they would still be, the actual time for the, so, it goes from the date of the original approval, so they had 90 days from the date of the original approval to get the milars filed. They just got the milars in our office for Mike to review, and then, it's actually a paper copy, and then they make the milars once we say, okay, you've met all of the conditions, if anything was changed. So, that was done very recently, so, this is them, they kind of got the milars in at a later date, so they're pushing up against that timeframe, too, but we do have the milars, they can be signed, they're just afraid they won't get them filed in the seven days. Again...
Why the delay?
Um, I'm not really sure why.
Okay.
To be honest.
In absence of a reason, I find that we've done so much, we've conceded so much, I don't understand why. They're on vacation, they can't bother to come into the clerk's office.
They're in South Carolina, that's...
You know, that's not my problem. It's not our problem. We've had a lot of problems with this. Three and a half years.
I'm inclined to take the high road with even though it's going to have issues. Yes, it is nice and wet. I like to be nice. So, I would take the high road on this. I don't think I'd gain anything by not.
Well, you don't, because they would just, right, it's not going to change anything.
It's really purely administrative.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion?
I move to accept Mansour Prime Properties LLC's request for a 90-day extension regarding the deadline for recording milars for the 80 Climax Road project.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Erin, uh, by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to accept the 90-day extension? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries with one negative vote. Very good. Can you report that back to them, Robin?
I will.
Anything else?
Nope.
Roll the record. Oh, David, sorry. David has a report to share with us from the Regional Planning Commission meeting, which happened last Thursday.
Commissioners, I represented you at the Regional Planning Commission meeting on September 19th, and for about 12 towns there, the agenda had an update to the rules of procedure, and the things that they were up, that they were changing in their rules of procedure are that they moved to a quarterly meeting schedule rather than by monthly. It also includes having the city of Hartford have three rather than two additional representatives that are appointed to the commission, and, let's see, somewhere is the other one. And they changed the timing in terms of a nominating committee for the officers of the Regional Planning Commission, so that it fits all of that. And the, oh, I'm sorry, and the representative or alternatives will be appointed for a two-year term, it was one year. So, those were the changes to the rules of procedure. Then they, the Capital Region Council government's representatives gave a report on things that they had been doing, and they called this "policy and planning update." So, here were six items that they talked about. One was working on complete streets and active transportation, so then, and they have an action plan and policy, and they expect that to be completed by November. So, this is trying to make streets accessible to all modes of transportation. They have a CDC implementation grant, and that's going to cover the nine regions, of which we are one. There's also a discussion on, not a presentation, on regional bike share, and from what I gather, they're basically following the trail of the train line that was put in. So, that's, they're looking at, doing a lot of improvements and things along there. So, next was the Transit Oriented Development Collaborative, and this has to do with opportunity zones, and again, they were focused on that bi...
Hartford line.
Hartford railway line, and they're going to have a meeting at the end of October with, which will have a charter responsibilities. And what they pointed out is that there's just a myriad of agencies and organizations, all of whom have overlapping and unclear responsibilities as regards to transportation, so they're trying to get a clearer charter of responsibilities. Next, they had a project called Engaging the Region's Anchor Institutions, and this is trying to, again, along the rail line, trying to get the large institutions and businesses to become active and cooperative into this effort. And they're having a meeting September 27th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., with a reception afterwards at the Hart River Brewery. You might want to mark your calendars for that.
How many reasons?
Next, they talked about something called Scenario Plan, which is something that they've gotten into, they've got a grant to get into this, and so there is a Consortium for Scenario Planning Conference, which will be held on November 6th and 8th. They've got a software package from Urban Footprint, which lets them do this scenario plan. And finally, they, okay, that was it in terms of what they reported on. Then they had each person who was representing the town go around and say what's new in planning and zoning in your town. So, I reported on Big Y and on the 80 Climax Road and solar farms, and we had actually more going on than most of the others. Many of the others said it was summertime and things were slow and nothing was happening. And the next meeting is going to be on November 21st at West Hartford.
Good job.
Thank you, David. So, the proposed meeting frequency, was that voted on?
The, all of these, these, what they call the modifications to the rules, what do they call it? Rules of procedure, which is essentially the Bible. So, they handed out this with the changes marked in red, and then there was a vote, and it was passed.
Okay.
So, the change of the meeting frequency was one of the proposed changes.
Very good, thank you. Excellent report.
Would you like a report from sustainability?
I would.
Since I referenced that, yeah. So, our charge was to put in for state review, essentially, of our sustainability efforts in town. Our initial effort was to try to put in for bronze, which is just entry level, pretty much to which can kind of thing. We ended up having enough points in the whole thing to try to go for silver off, right off the get-go, which is, they don't even have a goal yet, so. We're trying for silver, it's still in the review stages, we're making some updates to the information we had submitted to them, but it's doing fairly well right now.
So, Rich, what are some of the items that gain the town points?
It's, it's everything from soup to nuts. We had almost, we had everybody from Department of Public Works to, you know, probably Robin even produce some material for it, if not just Mike. There are things that we've done to make the town more sustainable. For example, we got credit for the lamps up and down Out Meadow here that we turned into LEDs from the regular pressure sodium lights. We got credit for that, we got credit for all the sidewalks that we're revamping, which is part of what Mr. Blooming was talking about, you know, making it so people can get onto and off of sidewalks, making it so that people can use the road with their bikes, all of that sort of thing. We get credit for pretty much everything that we do. We got credit for a meeting that they had at the high school, so we had some trouble back when, I guess, some girls put some blackface on or something. So, we conducted a whole program at the high school, parents, community, the whole thing. We got credit for that kind of thing. So, everything that's progressive and sustainable is part of this, including...
Anything with a solar farm?
No, because that doesn't benefit us at all.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with the sustainability of the town. And if we'd been getting the electricity coming from that, we would have gotten major points for that, too. But even the water filling stations, we got credit for that kind of thing. So, if you're on your bike and you stop at one of the local businesses and ask them to fill up your water bottle, they will.
How about the clothes out here?
Yes, that was, I'm not sure if that was part of it this time around or not. Those are fairly recent, we might have saved that for the next time we have to put in for this. So, yeah, I mean, it's everything from soup to nuts that you can think of.
It's a checklist?
It is a fairly large work, if you, if you bring it down to Excel, it's like nine major points with about 15 points within each of those, giving you a chance to gain enough points in the whole thing to be able to qualify for a level. So, there were a lot of unattainable things in the, in the whole deal, but there was quite a few that we did, I was surprised, as we were going through it.
What are some of the unattainables?
We haven't done a recent review of our historic properties, including a review of what we need to maintain them, so that they don't fall apart going forward. We don't have that kind of unified reporting on it. We have a list of our historic properties, we have done other things, but we don't have the whole thing, so there was no way for us to be able to get that done anytime really soon. So, the next time the town does that historic property review, we'll have some suggestions on other things they need to add into that, and then we'll be able to use that.
Rich, do you get any credit for like the spaces allocated for the public fart gardens?
Yes, as a matter of fact, yes. That was, that was part of it as well, right.
Very good. Good to hear. Thanks, Rich.
You're welcome.
Mr. Blooming?
In reviewing my notes, there was yet another item that they, that the CROG people presented, something called the Metro Hartford Brownfields Program. And this is something started by the Metro Hartford Alliance in 2004, but it's been picked up by CROG because they got an EPA grant, actually six grants totaling $1.6 million, and then they got another $200,000 from the state. And thus far, they've done 68 assessments in 12 municipalities. And what they do is they inventory the potential brownfield sites, they assess the contamination on the sites, they help prepare a cleanup plan, and then they help fund the cleanup of the sites. Now, and questions were asked of them, well, gee, how does a, how does a community get this? Well, communities many times, through foreclosure or other, me, other, other things, become the owners of properties that are brownfield, that are contaminated. If the town contributed to the contamination, you're not, you don't qualify for a loan for this, so then, they make loans to the towns to actually do all of this. But CROG has got a team that hires experts to do the assessments and develop plans for how to clean it up and stuff like that.
That, that's great, because that, I reviewed the brownfield question for the committee. We don't have any. We've got a couple properties that are contaminated. We have one superfund site, and we have one, I believe, gas station that's laying dormant right now, but that's not owned by the town. So, for now, we're good, we don't actually have brownfields. We have points?
So, this particular program is really aimed at municipal-owned properties that the municipality, and they had two of them showed along one of the rivers in the east side of Hartford, and, you know, again, they were pretty much focused along the railway. That's what they've done the majority. They had a map showing where the brownfield sites were, which ones they've assessed and stuff like that.
So, what else did you mention?
I'm sorry?
You said there's two, they're not town-owned.
Correct.
And it was one of the gas stations that's...
Yes, I believe one was a gas station, another one is another major company in town.
Very good, thanks, guys. Good information. Anything else, commissioners? Did I make a motion to be adjourned? Do you want to make a motion to adjourn? Motion has been made to adjourn. Is there a second?
I second.
Holly seconds. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.